Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Thursday, December 18th. My name is Scott Bugbee. To my right is Jim Leehan. To my left is Jeff Palumbo. Joining us shortly, to Jeff's left will be our Town Administrator, Jack Hathaway. And to Jack's left is Marion Harrington, our Executive Assistant. Now walking into the room is Jack Hathaway. Jack, would you read the agenda for us this evening?
I'd be happy to. Meeting in the Norfolk Board of Selectmen for Thursday, December 18th, 2014. First order of business, we have Scott Braglin in to talk about two policies, the automobile use policy and the retiree policy review. At 7:10, we have the Recreation Department, Recreation Commission, joining us for a discussion of the employee bullying policy. At 7:15, we actually have an executive session. We have Town Council represented by Jeff Blake. We have a number of items, including Board of Trustees versus Norfolk, MSQN Realty Trust versus ZBA, Liston versus Town, Rocco versus Plumlee Inspector, Norfolk Town Center LLC versus ZBA, Gobi versus Town, Woo Woo Realty versus ZBA, et al., Near Trustee versus Luciano, Walgreens versus Board of Assessors, followed by Town Administrator Report, including personnel fees for kennels, contracts from SURGE, annual licenses for 2015, including liquor, common victualer, and others, extended warranty, extending the term of the zoning working committee to December 31st, 2015, followed by acceptance of minutes and an second executive session that actually the board may slip into the first executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate for 66 Priscilla Avenue.
Great.
It should be out about 8:15.
Yeah, 8:15. Scott, you want to join us up here?
What time?
Haven't seen you for about 10 minutes. How are you?
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you very much for having me back. We're back to talk about two policies that I presented at the last meeting. We wanted to give you some time to think about it. And I'm hoping today that we have a vote on them. The first is the retiree terminated employee health insurance policy, which we're looking to amend. While we put this policy in place about a year ago, we think we could have done the notice, or lack thereof, better. So we're looking to give out a notice for people who would go on our regular medical plans, not the retiring plans, give them a month's notice if they wanted to get their spouses on. At this point, they can make that decision and join the plans. So that change has been put in the policy. I was asked if I could estimate the cost. As I said the last time, I know of two people that will definitely do this. That cost will be around $9,000 a year until they reach 65. So there is a limit to that. And other than that, it's really almost impossible because unless they were on our plan, I don't know the spouse's age. So, you know, it's hard for me. I do not believe that there is any other exposure to any extent in this thing. I think if we did not do this policy at all, there's great exposure, people coming on, on and off, particularly with the changes in the way medical care is happening at the moment.
So Scott, one of the conversations that you and I had was whether to include a provision whereby, you know, the spouse had to be a spouse of record, you know, whatever legal record, whether it's at the time of retirement, or, you know, if there is a period of time, three months, six months, subsequent to retirement, that the employees have to make the decision as to whether the spouse should participate. You know, my thinking is that that would be, you know, in the spirit of fairness and such, that that would seem to be a fair provision to include.
In the temporary notice period? That's really all it would affect.
Well, that if there was a spouse that was interested in being on the plan, the spouse would have had to been a spouse of the employee, either at the time of their retirement, or if there's a six-month window subsequent to, or whatever that period is, that the retirees are required to make that decision, that that coincide with, you know, the policy. If we're going to open it up, I would think that that would be a reasonable provision to include.
Okay. Do you mind if I just say something, then you guys can discuss? I got a couple of thoughts. First of all, anybody past or, you know, present and future that retire, they have a sixth-month period. And I don't, if they get married in that sixth-month period and want to add their spouse, I don't see any, why we would not do that. So that would be the ongoing kind of a thing. I think in this case, if we feel that we haven't, if we're feeling we want to give a notice period, I think we ought to give it to anybody if they're, if, you know, I don't think people are going to go out and get married tomorrow to get on this. So I think if they've been married since they retired, they're under 65, I personally would let them be on the policy. Again, we're talking a one-month period to let them on it. But that's my opinion. You guys make the decision.
Jeff, I understand what you're saying. I can see the logic of it. But let me kind of think through a scenario. I mean, our issue, our fundamental issue, is that we probably didn't do a fair and adequate communication to employees under the belief that they could add a spouse at a later time when we changed the policy. So we're dealing with not the best of communication processes that we should have employed in this situation. So if we had an employee that retired at age 59, and was married, and for whatever reasons, things didn't work out, and remarried at the age of 62, and was still under the belief that they could make that change because we didn't adequately communicate it, what you're suggesting would eliminate them from having that ability. And yet, they are under the same kind of fundamental consideration. I guess that's the concern I have with that. The other part, I guess, is that, and while it's an unknown, it is a very, very limited horizon of exposure that we have here. I mean, it's, we're talking about employees that are under the age of 65, number one, and whose spouses are under the age of 65. And only those employees that were in that specific timeframe, and it's a 30-day window that they have to correct it. So I wouldn't want to get stuck in a situation where we fine-tune this to such an extreme that we found ourselves not really fixing what we were trying to fix. And best I can tell, and I don't know any more than you do, Scott, on this, but I think the exposure is really minuscule. Well, you know, we won't get out of two or three people. I just don't think we have that number of employees in this set of considerations that have retired. And this is just my thought. I don't feel strongly about it, one way or the other. But I wouldn't want to put a caveat in there that complicated the process. Just my thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, if we really believe that the exposure is that minimal, then I'm fine. I guess, you know, the fact that I haven't really heard anything more specific from Scott in terms of what the exposure is, you know, he's pretty much shared the same information at the last meeting. You know, we're talking about, that's a reasonably substantial amount of money per person. That, as I sit here, I'm not sure if this is, you know, more than $25,000 for the town, or less. And if it's more...
I would be very surprised if it was, if it was anything like $25,000.
Okay, okay.
I did have one question, though, Scott.
Yeah.
Didn't we talk about employees that retired prior to 2012?
Uh...
Policy changed in 2012.
The policy, yes.
Right?
Yes.
So, we're talking about employees that retired prior to 2012.
Right. I think we talked about that. But I think, to be safe with the notice, that it, my understanding was that we were going to give everybody who had retired. And we're making sure, going forward, that people know that this is the specific policy, and we'll give them a document to do that. So we haven't been giving them a specific document that says that. We give them a document that says that these things can change at any time.
Okay. All right. I understand that. Okay. I'm okay with that.
I mean, I'm fine. I mean, again, to Jeff's point, I mean, if we keep tweaking, we won't get the policy changed, and get the notice out to people, and get this behind us, fix it.
So this policy will go out before January 30th, excuse me, December 30th. The notice will go out?
Yes.
Okay. And they have till the 31st to enroll?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Call is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay. So the other policy that we spoke about was the automobile use policy. This has been sort of a whole, I think, in the Selectmen Policies, Town Policies, that pretty much every town that I've talked to has something along this line. And as I had said, this is a sort of culmination of looking at about 15 different towns' policies. Since you've seen that, as I told you in the note that I sent you, I have made one change. I added a stipulation that an employee that has three accidents would be required to take some kind of remedial training. That can be overruled by Jack, or Jack can make that decision, if that's not the case, if they don't feel that was really employee's problem, or whatever. So he has the control to do that. But I think it would be prudent if someone's really having a driving problem to get that...
Driving school, so...
Yeah, I don't think it would be a driving school, but it may be...
Jim has offered to actually train them.
I have Jim with Jim. No, thank you.
The...
I heard that.
The biggest effects on people today, it has no effect on people that have contracts. It does require everybody that drives a town-owned car to have a seal on it. So there are very few, I think there's three, three cars that don't have seals. The cost of that, I understand, is 150, depending how fancy they get, 150 to $250. So we may be talking $750 cost to the town to get that done. We should have that anyway. The one employee that would lose the primary use of the car under this policy is the, is in the Real Estate Department. He's already been told that. So that's okay. And the other effect primarily is around taxes. But they should be doing this policy, they should be doing whatever the right tax thing is anyway. It's not because of this policy that they're doing that. It just spells it out. And Jack and others can make decisions. The policy allows them to make individual decisions if, you know, there's a particular situation. It certainly doesn't affect public safety employees either, so.
Okay. I read it. Questions?
Scott, we had a conversation about whether it's decals, bumper stickers, things that may be controversial, let's say, not everyone has the same opinion. And my experience with this is it's better to have it in the policy and avoid it in the first place. That's not to suggest that any employee has any intention of doing that. But once there's a transgression in that direction, it becomes more difficult to deal with.
I could easily add a statement in there that there should be no, either no bumper stickers on town-owned cars, or...
Nothing but town-approved stickers.
Or town-approved, you know, a sticker needs to be approved by the Town Administrator or something.
In particular, so it's the political bumper stickers in particular.
If Cole wanted to put schools back in session on the back of his truck, I mean, I wouldn't have any problem with that. But she should let Jack know. If you want, I can add that. I don't know how...
I think that'd be good. Not that I get to vote.
What's that? What about me?
Yes? Okay. Do we have a motion then, to approve with the added changes?
So moved.
Second.
Call is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Okay. 7:10. We're running behind. You guys, Recreation, you're going to, you're going to join us up here? I don't know if we have mics. Ken, you want to bring your group up, please?
I don't think we all need to go.
Can't. They want to make you go alone. It's okay.
You're up.
Thanks, everyone. I'm Ken Lawrence. I'm the Chairman of Recreation. We just had our meeting today. And at the meeting, we actually had a sort of a limited agenda. And what we wanted to do is remind each of our Commission members really about the bullying policy because there had been at least a few instances, or single incidents, that we were most concerned about, that may have violated that policy. And we wanted to make sure that each member had access to that policy, knew what the policy was, and actually understood the policy. And understand, more importantly, what the consequences are of not following that policy. And we were pretty explicit in terms of explaining, if there's further instances, we would actually ask you guys, your group, to go into executive session. And at that point, we would really fully disclose all information we have that reflect violations of that policy. And I think each member of the Commission agreed and understood. And Ann had volunteered providing links to the policy, so each member can take a look at that policy and fully understand it.
And do we have copies?
I have copies if anyone wants one.
And we will just distribute them to the Commission members tonight. So one last thing for you to do, Ann.
Okay.
That was it?
Thank you very much, Ken.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry for being late. Okay. Okay, it's now past 7:15.
Executive session.
Okay. Yes, it's now time for, 7:15 for executive session. I will have a call, vote to go into executive session, where we will actually talk about 66 Priscilla Ave, as well as the other items Jack mentioned. And we will be returning to public session after our executive session. So can I get a motion to move to executive session?
Jim Leehan, aye.
Jeff Palumbo, aye.
Scott Bugbee, aye. Thank you. We'll be back shortly. Great. Thank you. Welcome back. We're now back from executive session. And we'll pick up with the Town Administrator Report, action items.
Thank you, sir. So we have a very brief memo from the Town Clerk, asking us to set the fees for the kennels. As you know, you probably recall, a town meeting, we, a lot of discussion about kennels. And we've followed state law and defined personal kennels and commercial kennels. So Carol has suggested some fees for you to consider. She is requesting the new classifications of personal kennel and commercial kennel. My thought was $100 for a personal kennel and $250 for a commercial kennel. And just for your reference, the old rates were a kennel of zero to four dogs was $50, five to nine dogs was $100, and greater than nine was $150.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
So moved.
Second. Call is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jack.
We have paperwork that Marion handed out some updated sheets before the meeting about the award contracts for bidders under the SURGE TPW services for a 12-month period of 2/115 to 1/3116. And Bob McGee has reviewed these, and we believe these are competitive. You know, SURGE goes out to bid for us, and these are the rates that come back. And we'll use these for our payment reclamations, et cetera, for the upcoming year.
Great. Questions?
So moved.
Second. Call is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Then we have the fun stuff. We have liquor licenses.
Okay.
On your sheet...
Before, can we just jump, Jack? It doesn't matter. We have to finish.
We can do whatever you want.
Open the restaurants to remain open on New Year's Eve till 2:00, since the structure number of those?
Please vote to allow Eagle Brook Saloon, Novatos Bar and Grill, and the Horse and Carriage to remain open on New Year's Eve until 2:00 a.m., with patrons off-premises by 2:45 a.m.
And if I remember, this is consistent with what we've done?
Consistent, and...
Approved by the chief.
Chief Stone doesn't have any problem with it.
Okay.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Call is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Do the working, is there any working committee too, Jack?
Be happy to do whatever the chairman...
Or let me ask you a question. Can we do all these in bulk? We have to read them off individually?
You can just, you can be creative and just vote them as presented.
We'll read the name?
I'll read them real quick, if you want.
It's a lot of names.
Yeah, we can do it quick.
All right, Jack, I'll do the names, so.
We have liquor licenses for Eagle Brook Saloon, Novatos Bar and Grill LLC, Horse and Carriage Restaurant, Norfolk Wine and Spirits, Provo Discount Liquors, Shubin, Variety Inc., doing business as Linda's Variety Store, Sarthy Convenience Inc., doing business as Norfolk Food Mart, and Four Kicks.
Any questions?
Just, we've had no...
No changes in conditions.
No changes, no violations, no nothing.
No violations.
Okay.
Great.
So moved.
Second. Call is in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Thank you.
I'm sure you've read in the paper all the fun that Foxborough's having.
I did. I saw that, yeah.
We've got good businesses.
We do. We are very good managers at the businesses. We have common victualer licenses for Eagle Brook Saloon, Novatos, Novatos Bar and Grill, Horse and Carriage Restaurant, Four Kicks, Norfolk Town Pizza, Bork's Restaurant, Dunkin' Donuts, Center Ice Inc., Everest Roast Beef and Pizza.
Again, Jack, no problems with any, yeah?
No problem.
Okay. Motion?
So moved.
Second. Call is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have entertainment licenses for Eagle Brook Saloon. I'll just highlight a couple of the live music. Secular Days and Sundays, 1 to 5 instruments, 8 p.m. to 1 a.m. Four Kicks, 11 coin-operated arcade machines, Secular Days and Sundays, 7 a.m. to midnight. Norfolk Creek Management Company, Secular Days and Sundays, 3 coin-operated arcade machines, 7 a.m. to midnight. And Novatos Bar and Grill LLC, live music, Secular Days and Sundays, singer, entertainer, or DJ, hours 8 p.m. to 1 a.m.
Any questions?
No problems?
No problems.
So moved.
Second. Call is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have our automobile licenses, Class 1, Cliff Cycles, LVJ Trailers and Equipment, and MPG Motorsports. Class 2, we have Auto Clinic, that's the 104 Pond Street, Norfolk Auto Brokers, 84 Rockwood Road, Norfolk Auto, Inc., 38 Main Street, and Mitch's Repair, 269 Dedham Street. And the Class 3, which is Norfolk Auto Repair, also 38 Main Street.
Just one question. I know we've had ongoing concerns from neighbors regarding the one on Rockwood. That's, I haven't heard a thing in a long time, so...
No.
Lights are down, everything?
Been good, okay.
They appeared before us one time, about another issue.
And we had another issue with the number of cars on Dedham Street. That's been okay, too.
That's fine. Yeah, we adjusted their license last year, and no problems since then.
Okay.
And the Norfolk Auto Brokers, he had, we identified some excise bills that, you know, for like dealer plates that hadn't been paid. But as soon as we, they were under a, kind of a, an old corporate name. Soon as we identified him, he came in and paid him. So I was very happy with the response.
So moved.
Second. Call is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Then we have our...
The famous taxi cab debate.
Hey, we're growing. We got four.
Okay. Then we have four taxi license, well, four companies with taxi licenses. We have On Time Taxis with three licenses, Norfolk Town Taxi, and I need to adjust that, it's only one license, American Taxi of Norfolk is one license, and Maurice Cab, also one license.
Any complaints, Jack, or...
No. Scott's been, you know, dealing with the licenses, and he hasn't had any complaints.
Yeah, I haven't heard any complaints. At one time, there was some question about the level of service and such. I haven't heard any...
Oh, that was actually a former Selectman, then?
Yeah, they wouldn't go to Rob's house, but we took care of that.
Yeah.
Now they don't go to permanent... I was using a little more finesse.
That's late. I'm going on vacation.
Sounds like there's no issue here.
Motion?
So moved.
Second. Call is in favor?
Aye. Sorry, Rob.
We've covered the action items, discussion items. Jack, or anybody?
Just one update. Jack and I met with the Town Manager from Franklin, who is the one representing Jack's group, to have initial discussions regarding the lease for the rec center. It went well. I don't think there are going to be any issues. We're working on a preliminary draft, and we'll have another copy of that, and everybody will get a look at it. And it was a good meeting.
That was the Town Manager of Franklin?
With Franklin, yeah.
Administrator.
Town Administrator, did you have a chance to slip in the water discussion by any chance? Since we cooled the water, you're right over there.
I have slipped in the water discussion a couple times, so...
You did?
I'm working on it.
We're working on one thing at a time here.
All right. Just wanted to see if you guys, you know, everyone was hunky-dory, because I know you are.
But I don't, I mean, certainly based on today, I could not have been more cooperative, if you will.
Yeah.
Be sympathetic to some of the future concerns we might have, so.
Yeah, I think the...
Jeff was good.
Yeah, the rec, the rec, Regional Dispatch Directors, which are the four administrators, Town Administrators, you know, when we were talking about Rentham's facility, we were always very sympathetic to, you know, the impact on the Rentham police and fire, because it was going to be in their building. And that's continued over here. You know, you heard, as you said, you heard Jeff's concerns. You know, he looks, he's very good at looking at it from our point of view. He doesn't want to, he doesn't want to create a hostile environment. So it's a very good, relatively easy negotiation. And I thought the rate that we talked about, which we'll, I guess we'll leave for discussion, but the rate, at least compared to the Hingham rate, we were doing, we were doing okay.
Yeah, fair. Yep, very fair rate.
We did skip an action item, the bottom one, I think.
Oh, yeah, extending the term of the working.
Yeah, so we have the zoning working, Rogue Zoning Working Committee, which we probably should have a town meeting warrant article, I guess, maybe, just if we're going to, if we're going to turn this into a permanent committee, but...
But we haven't, we haven't turned it. It's just a working group, still, on a single issue that just continues. Why would we need to formalize it?
That's fine. We'll think about it.
Okay. Well, is that wrong?
Well, they're looking at, I think this group is looking at all the big subdivisions, right? So I, also, I'm saying if we're going to, if we're going to have this committee be the, be the new zoning bylaw study committee, you know, maybe we should just...
For the spring?
You know, just thinking about it. It's not, I don't, it's not, not any big issue.
I would favor that.
Yeah, let's just fix it.
I think this group has been very effective.
Absolutely. This group has been great.
I mean, the attendance has been stellar.
Yeah.
And a good mix. And, you know, I would strongly favor continuing. I think that's a great idea.
It's interesting. I mean, you know, it refers to non-voting member, which implies that votes take place. And based on the ones I participated in, it's, like you say, it's a working group, you know, working through a lot of information, and trying to make sense of it, and try to put it in the right perspective for the town, so making the right decisions. But, so, I mean, I just, the implication, which is non-voting member implies that it's more of a formal voting, you know, committee.
Well, it votes a recommendation. All it does is, you know, they vote a recommendation. They're not, there's nothing binding about their vote.
Right.
It's just that, you know, all they're saying is we've reviewed it, and it's the consensus and majority consideration of this committee that we favor this. And then they can bring that forward. It's almost a replacement for the old zoning bylaw study committee.
Yeah, I don't have any concerns with it. I mean, you know, the idea is to get input from the different boards, the same way the zoning bylaw study committee, that was the intent of the zoning bylaw study committee, so.
And the problem we had with that is that it was never, as you know, Jeff, never well-attended. It's hard to get even a quorum to that group. And you've been to it, and I think you have too, Scott. I mean, we've all participated in the meetings, and we've had...
As long as everyone's willing to continue on, right?
We've had overwhelming quorum every single meeting. And we were meeting weekly all summer long, so.
And everyone, Jack, everyone on this list, I know Jim can speak for himself, wants to continue on, is willing to participate?
To the...
Best of your guys' knowledge.
Best of my knowledge. The only one I haven't talked to about, I guess, is, well, it's the three, yeah. Yes, they're all, I haven't talked to Joyce, that's the only one I haven't talked to. But I, you know, she's still a member of the Conservation Commission, so I'd be surprised if she didn't.
We have a motion then to extend the term of the working committee?
So moved.
Second.
Call is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I think we have minutes to approve, Jack? And I think we have minutes to approve, Jeffrey, did you?
Yeah, so, what were the dates, September 16th, I've reviewed, and...
I made the changes.
You made them on the December 2nd, so, so, yeah, so I have reviewed, and I can go ahead and approve both the September 16th and December 2nd minutes, so I'll make the motion to, wanting to accept.
A second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jeff. Anything else, gentlemen, before Jack heads out for town?
No, I have a whole folder, he has a sign.
I have a whole folder, hearing nothing else?
Are they for Jeff, or for, just Jeff?
No, I think all three of you.
Oh, no, all three, it's all I said.
We'll be back, then...
These are SURGE.[1782.83]